I was just reminding myself when I was asking the board something. Back in the army, when you on a firing range, one of the, one of the commands is, ready on the right, ready on the left. And if you're ready on the right and the left, fire. Watch your length. Am I right, girlie? Still got the right command? I say that because 21 years today, I've been retired from the United States Army. After serving 27 years. Today is my official retirement date in the Army in 2002. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our town board meeting tonight. It looks like we have a large crowd that have carried over from the festivities from Saturday night's fireworks and, and ceremonies that was in the park. It was well attended. And we'll talk about some of that during our board member comments. But I welcome all of you here tonight with your questions for any hints to do. And we've got a lot of business that we have to take care of tonight. So would everyone please stand? I'm going to call being ordered. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. What we're thinking to praise you for another good day today, Lord, thank you, praise you for your goodness, your kindness, your mercies, Lord. Most of all, we thank you for your leading and directing in this meeting here today. That your spirit will move and direct in all things, Lord. And that everyone realizes and accompany him that all things belong to you. That you'll just lead and direct, take care of all things, let us go home to our appropriate places and come back at the same time. Most of all, we thank you for your goodness, kindness, your mercies, and touching every heart and soul that is here today. And then just do pray. Amen and amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every seat and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Tim Davis, for our implication tonight. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions?
Make a motion. We approve the agenda.
Have a motion. We have a second and a discussion. All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. We're going to move right into official comments. And we'll kick it off with our manager's report, which continues to get lengthy and longer every meeting as he continues to update us on various events and projects and Chancellor, that's your word.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to announce the return of Old Mill Days. The event will take place Saturday, October 19th, starts at 10:00 a.m. It is being spearheaded by Hope Mills Police Foundation. On the manager's report, the flyer has a QR code if you're interested in vending. Definitely taking those applications. Our Independence Day luncheon is tomorrow for our seniors ages 55 and up. That begins at 11:00 a.m. We have our Community Resource Fair event coming up on September 14th. You'll start to hear a lot more about that. And we have our parade on this Thursday for Independence Day. Second page of the manager's report is talking about we have SROs and traffic patrol officers, applications being submitted, projects and activities. There's Hope Mills Public Works Activity Updates. We did receive another fan program for $699,000 for sidewalks along Cameron Road beginning to South Main. These are being installed to increase pedestrian access for Hope Mills Middle School. Park Recreation Update. They are, you'll see posts outside right now near the splash pad. People may not realize that's phase two of the region's journey. So we're putting a big canopy out there, picnic tables, benches, things of that nature. And today, we wrapped up the first phase of our CGI videos. I want to present our mayor, Mayor Tim, with their Oscar nominations for the video. Those will be debuting pretty soon at the conclusion of our website redesign. And they'll be going live pretty quickly, pretty soon. Last page will continue to be updates for NCBLT construction projects. And that concludes the Hope Mills Manager's Report for July 1st.
Thank you, Chancellor. That was a whole lot and about two minutes there. Next on the agenda is board member comments. I'll start with Commissioner Marley.
Thank you, Mayor. Since we have a crowd here tonight, we've got a lot to cover. I'll hold it off for now. I appreciate it.
Okay. Commissioner Schweller?
It's good to see everyone here. If you were at the Independence Day celebration, it was a, it was a great event. A lot of fun. The children were there. I was handing out water pistols. So it was great. I look forward to seeing everyone at the parade because, you know, it's, that's always a good time. It's great to see everyone here and, uh...
Thank you. Commissioner Lehrer?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to echo what the others have said. And it's good to see so many people out here tonight. We know it's a special occasion while the people are here, but you're here. And, and it's really, really good to see you here. Some of the festivities that's taken place already this week was fantastic. I watched the firework the other night from my truck. I didn't even make that car. Again, good to see everyone here. You see these firefighters and police officers. Thank them for their duty. And any of the military, thank you, Steve. Thank them for their duty. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lehrer. Commissioner Kramer?
I don't have anything that I'm going to bring before the board tonight, but welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Purten, Dr. McCray?
Last thing, well, I just echo what everyone else said, but thank you all for being here tonight. And the staff, I'm not going to call out any department's name because I know it was several departments to help make that event come together. And it was very, very hot. So I do appreciate you all for working really hard to make that a nice event for this community.
Thank you very much. Yes, Saturday was rather warm. But nonetheless, the events went on. And that's a true partnership and a testament to, to our towns' departments, who every day provide exemplary services to the community. And Saturday was one of those events, despite the heat throughout the day and that humidity that we have been gripped with over the past few weeks. One of the greatest additions that we had to the park was, was the splash pad. And if you were there Saturday to see the amount of children and families that were using that splash pad, that is why Dr. McCray was behind this several years ago when I was on the board and we served together as commissioners. That is the reason why. But they have a request. Yes, they do. I have to share the request. I promised I would. And I rarely say that, but I don't know. Lamarcos not here, but here's what the request is from the kids and the family. They want another bucket. Everybody know what I'm talking about with the bucket? They want another bucket. And they'll need two buckets out there on the splash pad. But that's what it's about. That's community. It's who we are. And it's what we do. And it's our culture. And we're getting ready to go into our Fourth of July parade, which kicks off early this year. So we're, it's going to change. Instead of the heat of the afternoon, now we're kicking it off early Thursday morning. And I surely hope that it's well-attended for everyone that wants to participate in the 248th birthday of these United States. That's all I have. We're going to go right into some presentations. The first one's going to be swearing in as a deputy fire chief, followed by some swearing in, some police officers. And then I got a proclamation about July 4th I'm going to read. We're going to do it all from the front. That's our tradition. So I'm putting all this up here and we'll come in. Come on, DC. Bring your kids with you. Bring your family. Right, sir. Left hand on the ground. Now raise your right. There you go. Face way up there. Your right is down. Face the audience. And then we'll read the oath of office. Oath of office. I state your name.
I, Robert Earl.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will.
That I will.
Well and truly execute.
Well and truly execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
As deputy fire chief.
Deputy fire chief.
For the town of Hope Mills.
For the town of Hope Mills.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my skill and abilities.
My skill and ability.
According to laws.
According to the laws.
And the local ordinances.
And the local ordinances.
Of the town of Hope Mills.
The town of Hope Mills.
So help me God.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Now, I've got something I want to share. These two probably know what I'm about to say. Sometimes you look for the right talent you've got in your own departments. And we've got the right talent in our party and our deputy fire chief. The right talent, the right people at the right time. And if these two have signed a 10-year contract, that they're going to work with each other. And it's pretty much like a marriage until death doesn't part. And I say this because we are entering a new era in our fire department. We had 30 years of Chief, Chief Joe Conches and DC Steve Lopez. 30 long years of just those two over the period of time. And that builds a whole lot of leadership and that builds trust within the fire department because these two folks here are the ones that when they're called at night to come and put out a fire, they're there along with the firefighters that work in that firehouse. And it's about the right leadership, the right time. And I want everyone at Hope Mills to know that we have the right leadership and the right time. Again, congratulations. All right, chief. I've only got one mile already, but I have three swearing ins. Three oath of office.
Yes, sir. Take your chair. So tonight, we're, we're going to be swearing in three, three new officers. The first one is, and folks want to call you from up in the family, please. The first one is Tony Locklear. He is a 12-year veteran of law enforcement, starting in 2005. Previously worked for the Red Springs and the Pembroke Police Department. And he's here tonight with his wife, wife, Lilana, and daughter Summer. The next officer is Kelton Glorefield. He's an eight-year veteran, starting in 2014. Did all of his time with the Fayetteville Police Department. He is here with his wife Angela and his children, Damian, Declan, and Caitlin. He is also an Army veteran. And our third officer is Robert Fields. Robert is a three-year veteran of the, was a three-year veteran of the Fayetteville Police Department before joining us. He's also an Army vet. Mom and sister here. And his mom, Vicki, and sis, sister, Tiaja are here. Oh, I'm sorry. Alvin. And, and Alvin.
Okay, I'm going to read the oath of office. When I say I state your name, you're going to state your name in complete, not at the same time. It'll be you and then the other person. Okay? Here we go. Oath of office, I state your name. Tony Locklear. You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
To enforce the criminal laws of this state.
To enforce the criminal laws of this state.
And I will not be influenced.
And I will not be influenced.
In any manner.
In any manner.
On account of bias or prejudice.
On account of bias or prejudice.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
North Carolina.
North Carolina.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
Bear with.
Bear with.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartial.
And impartial.
Discharge the duty.
Discharge the duty.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As a law enforcement officer.
As a law enforcement officer.
And as a police officer.
And as a police officer.
Of the town of Hope Mills.
Of the town of Hope Mills.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my skills.
Of my skills.
Abilities.
Abilities.
And judgment.
And judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God. Congratulations.
What I'm handing out is the law enforcement code of ethics. And for pictures. Anybody want to take pictures? You come up and take pictures.
So I'll email you copies of this tomorrow.
Okay. All right, thank you.
It's 11 people watching.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is proclamation, recognizing Independence Day. Whereas on Independence Day, we remember names like Washington, Adams, Jefferson, Franklin, Hancock, and honor their courage and vision. We are grateful that our founding fathers pledged their lives and sacred honors to create an independent America. And whereas we are thankful that this nation, under God, is still free, independent, and America is a place of liberty and opportunity for which we are blessed and proud to call home. And whereas on this Fourth of July, we honor the brave men and women of our military, our first responders, and their families, and express gratitude for their courage and dedication to duty to preserve our freedom. And whereas on this day, we renew our allegiance to the United States, democracy, and freedom, and are grateful we can come together as a community to celebrate our freedoms, understanding that in some areas of the globe, freedom is still threatened. Now, therefore, I, Jesse Bellflower, as mayor of the town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim Thursday, July 4th, 2024, as Independence Day. And the town of Hope Mills urge all citizens and visitors alike to join with me on this day as we celebrate Independence Day. The town of Hope Mills proclaim this first day of July, 2024. Next item is, we've got three public hearings. We'll start off with the first one. And that will, we will turn that over to Chancellor or Enlam for the first. The first one is Annexation A 2024-03, Cumberland County Parcel 042424049, and containing 14.89 acres less or more, recorded in Flat Book 151, page 33, and being a portion of the deed duly recorded in the deed book 11934, page 677. Cumberland County Register, North Carolina. This is a continuous annexation. That's under tab three.
Evening. We have a annexation request. Town Hope Mills voted to accept the petition for annexation on May 6, 2024, submitted by Smithsite Consultants, the LLC, on behalf of Devon Southview Holdings LLC, title number 0424-24-6561. Subject property is adjacent to the Pinecrest Manor home, as well as several residential neighborhoods like Fox Meadow, which is inside the town of it, Worthington and Southview subdivisions, which are in the county and also near Southview High School. Access to the property will be from both Lakefront Drive and Aston Avenue. Both of those are private roads. Board of Commissioners approve resolution R 2024-67 on June 3rd, fixing the public hearing to today's meeting. Staff is requesting authorization proceeding with initially zoning the property under the R 5A Residential District. And here you see in green the location of the property that is requesting annexation. Are we looking forward for any questions?
Board have any questions?
Motion to open public hearing.
Motion. Five seconds. Have a motion. We have a second to open the public hearing. All in favor? Seeing none opposed, the public hearing is over. Is anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposed annexation? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposed annexation? Do you like to speak in favor, sir?
Sure.
Okay. Just come to the mic and state your name and address in your comments.
Guess that 121 Buell Drive, Linden, North Carolina. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm the site's designer and civil engineer. I've been working with the landowner. At this point, we're just seeking to annex. The intent would be to eventually continue the same pattern of development, but this would be for market rate multifamily. And there, despite the size of the track, the intent would most likely be to do 96 units, just four buildings. So if you guys have any questions, feel free to be, the whole reason I want to speak is just to give you a little bit of clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against the proposed annexation? Is there anyone here that would like to speak against the proposed annexation? Motion to close the public hearing. Second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Seeing none opposed?
May I make a motion? We are approving the annexation in 2024-03, and after our staff give the initial zoning process, to designate the property as R 5A Residential District.
We have a second. We have a motion. We have a second. Deed discussion? None. All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is ZNG 003-24, Initial Zoning to C 2P and R 5, or More Restricted Zoning, Empty Lots on Camden Road, near and across Hooker Mill, Hooker Will Drive. R E I D 9494958505000, 949494949. REID 9494958505000, 9494954294000, 9494961873000. McKimmon Creed, Agent Barbara McBride Johnson, heirs owners, and that is under tab four.
The subject property is adjacent to the existing subdivision called Estate of Camden, which is in Cumberland County, across the street from undeveloped property that is currently owned C2P, Planned Service and Retail, and R5 Residential, and also adjacent to more undeveloped property that is only C1P, Planned Local Business, and R75 Residential. Access will most likely be from Camden Road. Board of Commissioners approved annexation on March 4th, 2024, with authorization to pursue initial zoning to R5 Residential and C2P, Planned Service and Retail Districts, as shown on the attached map. Cumberland County Joint Planning Board met and recommended approval during the regularly scheduled meeting on May 21st, 2024. Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan calls for low-vensity residential, which is not compliant with this request. While this request is not compliant, it does mirror anticipated future developments in the immediate area, including finishing out Bretton Woods Drive, that will be built to town standards, and providing a new entry exit for the adjacent neighborhoods like Valley and Village Green. This is the area right here, that is not shaded, that we are discussing at the moment. The green area is the residential section, and the yellowish area is the commercial section that they are requesting initial zoning for. And here is another area showing it on the map, highlighted in yellow. Right here is Whipper Will, giving a location on Camden Road. And as you can see, water and sewer are both nearby. And this is showing the low residential for future residential development, back here. Future commercial development is directly across the street. Looking forward for any questions you may have.
Board have any questions? Okay, Mr. Burge?
Um, do you know if it's going to be single-family residential area, or will it be apartments that's going to be built?
So, as far as I know, the plan that they want to do is a combination, a, I believe, a gated apartment complex that's going to be for the residents only to go into, and then the area that Bretton Woods will be creating will show townhomes that I believe will be feasible.
Do you know how many they can get in there?
Um, not at the top of my head. They've not, well, they've not submitted an actual official site plan for it yet, so we don't know the, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head for the.
The reason I'm asking, I was reading in here where it shows that the schools are at almost full capacity in that area, how would this affect the schools?
Uh, as I understand it, Cumberland County, they, they're the ones that provide that information, and they adjust accordingly. My understanding from speaking within the past is that helps them to determine whether or not they need to build new houses. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Burge?
Is, uh, is there a plan to enter exit on that property?
They do, they do plan to, this is what the town manager has mentioned a few times in the past, where they're going to finish out Bretton Woods Drive all the way up to Camden Road, that's not just.
Yeah, I had a lady stop me back there when they're building new houses over the weekend, and she's talking about selling her property because of the buildings up. And I said, we don't want to do anything about that, we want to let them go ahead and grow. And told her, to my knowledge before, that there was supposed to be a new road for entrance and exit, and she brought up the old road, that's all the hole now. And I told her, I'm sure that if they build it there, if I recall correctly, they had promised that they were gonna put another entrance up there. So, I hope that's the way it goes. Thank you very much.
Just to give you an idea, on this one, it does show right here, the planned Bretton Woods.
Watch you don't punch my front window out with that pointer. Thank you.
Thanks for mentioning that, any other comments from the board? Has a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second? All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries, public hearing is open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposed zoning? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposed zoning? Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against the proposed zoning? Is there anyone here that would like to speak against the proposed zoning?
Motion to close the public hearing, second?
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor? Public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion on this, on this, on this item?
Um, Mr. Mayor, in case ZNG 003-24, the Town of Hope Mills planning, staff and Board of Commissioners writing in approval of the initial zoning request to the R5 Residential and C2 Planned Service and Retail District, finds that even though the request is only partial, partially compliant to the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan 2013, that the nation, it does mirror and complement anticipated future developments within the immediate area, as well as existing developed properties within the area, and the economic and regional impact of the proposed development fits within the vision and long-term outlook of the area, developed to the immediate south, approval of this request is reasonable and in the public interest because the district requested is in harmony with surrounding existing used and zoning.
Second, second, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Next item, this is item C. ZNG 004-24, rezoning fifty-two point seventy-six, plus or minus acres from CP1, C1P, sorry, and R7.5 to C2P and R5, or a more restricted zoning, empty lot on Camden Road, next, and near and across Whipper Will Drive, that is REID 9494961873000. 04, 04059166000, and 0404048665000. Kim Creed, Agent, Carl Coleman Johnson, and Barbara McBride Johnson, heirs, they're the owners, and that's under tab five.
The request is to rezonate the R5 Residential, C2P Planned Service and Local Districts. Subject property is adjacent to the existing subdivisions, Estate of Camden, Village Green, and Valley Home, across the street from undeveloped property that is also owned C2P, Planned Service and Retail, and R5 Residential, and it is also adjacent to more undeveloped property that is owned C1P, and local business, and R75 Residential. Access will also, will most likely be from Camden Road and Bretton Woods Drive. The Cumberland County Joint Planning Board met and recommended approval during the regularly scheduled meeting on May 21st. The Southwest Land Use Plan calls for low-vensity residential. While this request is only partially compliant, it does mirror the anticipated future developments in the immediate area, including finishing out Bretton Woods Drive, that will be built to town standards, and will provide a safe and dependable entry and exit for the adjacent neighborhoods from Valley and Village Green. And as you saw earlier, except this area is no longer shaded, this is the focus area. And also mentioned earlier, this is showing Bretton Woods, and standing out to Camden Road, the front section in green, the yellow is the commercial section, and the back green area is the residential section. This is showing, it is directly next to Village Green and Valley Home. And as mentioned earlier, it does have access to water and sewer. And it's showing lower residential area with our Southwest plan. I'm not opening for any question or mistake.
Any questions from the board?
Motion to open public hearing.
Motion and a second to open public hearing, all in favor? Seeing none opposed, public hearing is now open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this propos, proposed zoning? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposed zoning? Is there anyone here that would like to speak against the proposed zoning? Is there anyone here that would like to speak against the proposed zoning?
Motion to close the public hearing, second?
No motion, we have a second to close public hearing, all in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Do we have an action?
May I make a motion that we approve ZNG-004-24 for the rezoning request to the R5 Residential and C2P Planned Service and Retail District, and find that even though the request is not consistent with Southwest Cameron Land Use Plan 2013 designation, it does mirror and complement anticipated future developments within the immediate area, as well as the existing developed properties within the area, and the economic and regional impact of the proposed development fits within the vision and long-term outlook of the area developed to the immediate south. Approval of the request is reasonable, and in the public interest because the district requested is in harmony with surrounding existing uses and zoning.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion by board? If not, all in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public comments. We have two speakers for tonight, I would like to remind the speakers that it's three minutes per speaker. When the speaker, when I call your name, the speaker will come to the mic, state your name and address, and you have three minutes to share the topic of discussion. The first speaker is Brenda Warren.
Good evening, Mayor Ray, the town hall manager and commissioners. I've been here before, my name is Brenda Warren. I represent, along with some of my residents here, neighbors, at Pine Ridge Manor Apartments at 3200 Big Time Drive in Hope Mills, North Carolina, 28340. The purpose of this memo, which I gave for all of y'all to look at and follow me, is to overview and the past and present situations out there with the homeless people. The problem started in 2021, and residents there, we had many concerns. I, Brenda, along with the other residents, would write down everything we could see and keep, the paperwork until we could go to the town hall meetings. After the first meeting in November of 2021, and the next meeting, which was June 2023, we brought signed petitions from many of our residents that had concerns. We had cars stolen and vandalized, and things stolen off the patios of the residents. Some residents was cursed at, we were afraid of what could happen to us or our property. The list goes on and on. Chief Dollinger reached out to us at the last meeting, which we were more than grateful for. We sometime hear him on the radio, speaking about the community, and you also, Mayor, I heard you on the radio also. Fighting crime is very important and dangerous. All this is an over, ongoing problem for our Hope Mills Police Department. I called the chief because my neighbors and I noticed that the homes were back and building up another encampment. I called on Friday, June 14, 2024, and my neighbor Connie here, she followed up on Wednesday, June 19, 2024. Chief Dollinger was here on Thursday, June 20th, 2024. Their turnout was awesome. We are thankful and deeply appreciative. This chief and his staff will help any of us in Hope Mills in any way he can. His comments to us were, was, see something, say something. On June 13th of 2023, the CPS 17, the news, the heading was Senior Living Residents Concerned About Crime From Hope Mills Homeless Camp. They covered this situation, you can watch the full coverage. This time, the encampment was stopped before it was back like that again. Again, thankful to our chief and his staff for helping the residents at 3200 Big Time Drive, Hope Mills, North Carolina, 28340. Thank you, Mayor, for letting us come and speak again, to let you know, because you knew that the chief, he reaches out to us and he tries to help us every time we see them, we can't, sleeping bags and tents and stuff like that. Appreciate y'all's time and here and that support.
Brenda, can I share a comment from what you just read? I would like the entire community to reference this one comment, see something, say something. So many times, there in our community, people see a lot of different things, but if you don't say something, if you don't reach out to the appropriate people and share what this something is, then it'll never get resolved, it'll never get addressed. And we have a first-class police department here.
Awesome. Like I said, we called the chief, and he answers his phone, and he came right away again to help us, because that's a senior citizen conference. And some of those people are, you know, they have crutches and pains and wheelchairs and oxygen, they can't run from these people, they're not able. If they got after me, I'd probably be doing the best I can to get away from them, you know, because I don't have a car, I walk. A lot of the residents walk to the store to go to them, so everybody don't have a car, you know what I'm saying? It's just like everybody don't have a computer, and some people are just afraid, you know? So we appreciate the chief, and we want y'all to know that, so.
A lot, a lot of people, Brenda, have, you know, they've aged, they've aged where they can't drive a car anymore, but they've driven for years, and now they've aged where they can't drive anymore, so they're pretty much.
And it's a nice community, oh yes, but those people, some of them are very scary, you know what I'm saying? And they may not bother, you know, you as far as attacking you, but it only takes one, and it's over, you know what I'm saying? We just appreciate the chief, and staff, and all of you guys here, so. Thank you so much for listening to them. We appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner.
Brenda, we thank you for coming in and speaking up. I sat out there one day in that parking lot and counted about forty or fifty individuals going in and out of that woods. And chief, thank you for getting on top of. that woods. Chief, thank you for getting on top of everything. We do have a top-notch police department here. Actually, we have a lot of top-notch offices here, not just the police department, from Town Hall to Martin Rec and to the Fire Department. We're proud of all of them as people like you coming forward to let us know when they've done something that's the right. And I thank chief for getting it right, Sam. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Lay. Any other comments from the board? Okay, our next speaker, I'll make sure I get this name right. I'm not really great with names. I apologize in advance. Is it Desmond L. R. B.?
It's funny, usually people say that long. So I appreciate it. My name is Desmond Ellaby. I think it's important to say that I am not a resident of the town of Hope Mills. I'm a resident of Fayetteville, the city of Fayetteville. However, I've had a long time vested interest in the need for accessible and affordable transportation in this community. I have presented before the previous administration before regarding transportation. I believe the last conversation was in regards to the town having found some funding for a pilot program. However, the previous mayor, I believe, had a, an associate, I should say, that had trolleys and wanted to do it for free. Needless to say, it never started. I wasn't surprised because that individual never took part in the discussion leading up to the last meeting or the counter I had with you all. But it is a dire need here. And in my experience, even through managed care Medicaid, I've transported several even disabled clients out of this community. It's needed. I think the last time we talked, a few concerns were brought up by a few that are still on the board. One was about veterans having access to veteran services. Another one was seniors having access to many, many programs that you offer via seniors, which is admirable. And also access to federal check for those that need, was having continued education classes there, which was addressed in the previous plan. But since then, I have been doing some, some additional modifications to the plan that is more feasible, I believe, and more, which is most importantly, effective for those groups of individuals that I just mentioned, as well as the working class members. I do notice that Hope Mills is a growing town. You all are a spotlight in this area. And that's also admirable. But I do believe that growing the economy comes with jobs and having access to those jobs is important. And I think that the solutions that I have to present to you all will address those needs. I just asked it. I have cards to give to the clerk, but if those, if that information is passed to appropriate officials that would allow an opportunity for discussion on this topic, would be greatly appreciated. And again, thank you all for having me tonight and allowing me to speak. And I look forward to hearing back maybe in the near future as far as discussion. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board, and thank you to the town administration.
Thank you very much for bringing this up, about transportation needs in the community. It's something that's important. And I can tell you, it was something, the funding we included in one of the priorities that we requested for state funding in the short session, and probably will probably be entertained either in the short or the long session in the General Assembly. Public transportation, just what you brought up, is an issue that is very important to the Hope Mills community because it affects so many groups of people here in Hope Mills that, just like Brenda said earlier, they can't drive anymore. They've driven for years, but now all of a sudden, you know, they've aged or there's health restrictions where they can't drive anymore. So transportation is an issue. It's an ongoing issue, as it well should be. But I look at it also the same way, not only as Hope Mills, I look at it as a regional issue. And I would wish that we in Cumberland County could address it as a regional issue. I really do. And I thank you very much, sir, for your comments. Any board comments?
No, I, well, no, but I just like to say, I think it is regional. It wasn't just state or state, it was state and Methodist as well. So the community college and the university here, and I campaigned on it every time, six years, and trying to fight for it. Every, every, every year I try to fight for it because I know that it's needed in this community. So hopefully at some point we can finally make it happen.
Any other comments? Mr. President.
Yes, I'd like to know more about what he has to offer. I wasn't on that board when you presented it before, but I would like to get to know you better and what you have to offer for the town.
Thank you, Commissioner Gray. If you would kindly give your information to one of our clerks. And we always have opportunities for presentations. So if you would like to present an updated presentation to your plan, post-plan, by all means, give us one, get Ashley or Qualetta, and they'll schedule you on an upcoming agenda. And we can really have, have some conversation. And like Mayor Proken, Dr. McCray said, this has been an ongoing issue for years. It takes funding. It takes funding. But it's a very important community issue.
I'd just like to say, to hear you talk about the regional standpoint, where you, in your seat, where you're sitting now, I'm just excited about the future for this town just because of your insight of what is needed around this area. So yeah, I appreciate it.
Again, thank you very much, sir.
Man, just one final problem. I'd like to hear the presentation from this gentleman as well, but I'd like to ask him to go to the manager, like we had everybody else go through the departments before we just put it on there. So I know he's got his card, but you would, we'd give it to our town manager and he'd like to speak with you up shortly for the question.
And I'd like to commend, we call him D. J., but we do have a past history with Mr. Ellaby. He was actually instrumental in working with us after he can just submitted mitigation plan to help draft one of those routes that we were talking about with that. So we do have some history. I think funding became an issue. And so right now, we are poised, we have an iron at the fire at the legislature in terms of a funding request. And so I'll be eager to see if we can time it to where maybe we have a viable presentation and a viable product that comes along at the same time we come out of the short or long session. So I definitely engage Mr. Ellaby.
Thank you very much, Andy. Okay, that's all we have. Public comments tonight, and I thank both the speakers. Next on the agenda is consent agenda. Item A, consideration of approval of the Board of Commissioners, June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting minutes. It's under tab six. Item B is approval of resolution R twenty twenty-four dash zero one one fixing date of public hearing for annexation A twenty twenty-four dash zero four, Redston Companies Incorporated, pin zero four zero four six eight nine zero eight three and pin zero four zero seven eight two one seven seven under tab seven. Item C is approval of resolution R twenty twenty-four dash zero one two declaring certain property of the town, the surplus and authorizing the disposition of certain property. It's in tab eight. Is there any commissioner that would like to move any item to new business?
Much to approve. Consent agenda is read.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Thank you.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Seeing no one opposed, consent agenda is approved. Ask presented. It's ended consent agenda. We have no old business. We'll move right into new business under eight. Item A, authorizing the town manager to execute the contract with Morgan Trucking and General Construction for two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, two hun, no, excuse me, two hundred and sixty-two, two dollars and five cents, and approving corresponding budget amendment number one for two hundred and nine thousand six hundred dollars. And that is under tab nine. And Chancellor Healy.
I'll turn over to a couple of the works, but this is tied to the multi-use path contract. I think they are ready to execute the construction phase. I think Doc can provide you a little additional information. Like Chancellor said, we are ready to go to construction on multi-use path. And this is the contract for the construction portion itself. You see the two figures there, the two sixty-two and change is for the construction contract itself. The two hundred nine thousand six hundred is for the budget amendment. And we do it that way because we started this project about three years ago and it's been a bit with the DOT administrative quidants for the process. So we never know exactly when we're going to need the construction funding or the engineering funding. So that is placed in our bill, construction funds. And then when it's needed, the budget amendment is prepared so we can pay the funding out to put it in the appropriate place to pay the bills for the project.
还有什么, Commissioner?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the town manager to execute the contract with Morgan Trucking and General Construction for two sixty-two zero zero two point oh five and budget number number one for two oh nine six hundred.
Do we have a second? Do we have any discussion? We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion?
Is the difference of what we're transferring, what we have been given, the fifty-two thousand four oh two five, have we budgeted for that additional amount in the budget?
The difference is because we already had that fifty-two thousand dollars on that line item. So we're just transferring the additional funds to make up the price of the contract.
We already have that instead of this. Okay.
So? This is, as Don said, this has been a three-year ordeal, right, Don? Finally, it's coming to fruition, finally, after three years. Okay. Motion approved. Everybody got that, the second? All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Don.
Somebody want to hang around for a minute?
That would be item B. Item B, authorizing the town manager to execute the construction, engineering and inspection contract with Summit Design Engineering Services, P L L C, and that's under tab ten.
This is for the inspection services that go along with the contract itself. The DOT requirements are very, I guess cumbersome is a good way to put it because they require a lot of material testing, daily inspections, things of that nature. And the experience from everybody that has done this, that is a lot better for a engineering firm, to hire an engineering firm that is used to doing this type of thing because they know what all the big work is. They can do the labor surveys and stuff like that. Whereas we don't have that type of experience. And what it does is it chews the town out of the jeopardy of losing for having to pay back that funding if we do something wrong on that part of it. So this way it's all done properly and we're confident that it'll survive in the DOT audit at the end.
Okay. Any comments from board members?
I'll make a motion, make a motion to authorize the town manager to execute construction, engineering, inspection contract with Summit Design and Engineering Services, P L L C.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item C, approval of the execution of an easement agreement and memorandum of understanding with GMR Capital LLC for the installation and infrastructure tied to the senior center and golf course, and that's under tab eleven. And will you have a lead?
Mayor, I'll ask you to take the lead on this.
I'm just running the mouse for him.
This is a request tied to infrastructure and it's a request for M O U and an easement agreement with GMR Capital. I'll give you some background. Twenty-twenty-two GMR Capital was granted approval of a rezoning of nineteen acres of land pursuant to K Z N G sixteen twenty-two. It's resold to residential and subsequently approved for multi-family construction. On June eighteenth this year, they filed a request to rezone the adjacent property at thirty-six twenty-five Goffview to the conditional R five district. That's filed under Z N G zero zero two twenty-four, contemplating the construction of forty-six single-family houses and thirty-one townhomes that would tie into the previously approved multi-family development. However, as both developments propose construction of over one hundred combined residential units, the NC State Fire Code requires a secondary entrance to the proposed development. With the location and makeup of existing properties, the main interest proposed off of Goffey Road currently provides for the only access point to the site. In terms of an easement request, the town of Hope Mills is currently exploring program options for the architecture design of a community center and senior center at Hope Mills Golf Course. With the proposed entrance for our piece also anticipated off Goffey Road, the NC State Fire Code also requires a secondary entrance for the development of our piece as well. With both the GMR and Hope Mills Community and Senior Center in need of secondary entrances, we have been approached by GMR Capital LLC for a request for an easement across Hope Mills Golf Course. This easement would be for the construction of a secondary emergency access railway that would satisfy the requirements of the State Fire Code for their development. The access railway would be in the exact location of the proposed primary entrance for our community senior center. This would ultimately benefit the town as it would render the GMR Capital primary entrance to be our secondary entrance. And what you have in your package is a actual map that outlines this. They're also requesting a fifteen-foot wide easement from us to provide for the construction of a deceleration lane for their primary entrance. They're also granting the town of Hope Mills access to twenty-plus acres of their adjacent undeveloped land in the rear that they can't do anything else. But they're contemplating dedicating that to the public as a nature preserve. And so part of this is actually providing us with an easement to that. In terms of the M O U, we have met extensively with GMR Capital LLC to draft terms for the consideration tied to the construction entrance and the actual proposed easements. The terms outlined in your package are for the fifteen-foot wide railway easement for GMR Capital for them to construct the deceleration lane. We would grant them with a fifty-foot wide access easement for the construction of their emergency access railway to meet the secondary entrance requirements. They will construct the emergency access railway, which would consist of a moss box gate. They will also grant us access to the rear of the portion, which I mentioned before. The town would then construct a fifty-foot apron off of Goffey Road for the emergency access railway as required for NC DOT. We would also bring that emergency access railway up to full NC DOT town standards once the funding of the Hope Mills Community Senior Center is received. And we will take over the entire railway for maintenance once both developments are completed. So what is before you this evening is the request for two documents, the approval of an easement agreement to actually cross our property, and the approval of an M O U that materializes the terms and conditions in terms of each party's requirements. And I'll open up the floor to any questions that you may have. I will say that we have met extensively with extensively with this group. They've come to plan to view. I can't count the number of times our entire staff has reviewed this. And I do think after several rounds, I think we're all at a point where we do have a document and we are ready to recommend approval of. But I'll put it the floor to any questions that you have.
Thank you, Chancellor. Any questions from the board? Mr. Berry?
I thought we had, this had been brought up before us before and we decided that we didn't want to give easement rights to anyone on that golf course.
What was brought to us before was tied to a request to relocate our maintenance facility. That was a different portion and it was the same group, but it was a different request altogether.
Wasn't that for an easement as well?
It was for an easement, but the reason why we had an issue was because the timing of it and the location of the roadway proposed contemplated us to tear down our maintenance facility, which we were not ready to do at that time. And so that's where the impasse was before. What we have tonight is a completely different request because the roadway was moved so that that would not become an easement.
Well, I don't think that we even know when we're going to have the senior citizen built in this. Don't know if we're going to get the money to do it. And also by granting this easement, we will be required to put in a turn lane out there. Plus, all of the walking area, and I'll check this out, will have to be brought up to ADA compliance and or make it compliant. And I don't think that we have, the town has the money to do that with me. As far as giving us twenty acres of unusable land, that just relieves them of having to pay taxes on that property. I mean, I don't agree with this and we're not very whole.
I will say the deceleration lane will be a requirement of us for any development of the site for our entrance. So that's not going to go away. I'll also say that the twenty acres that's not being given to us, they're dedicating that to the general public for conservation needs and they're talking to NC State to do. And so ultimately, regardless of what happens, we would have to put that deceleration lane in at any time. So that's not something that we would actually be exempt from. In terms of the ADA compliance, the entire site has to be ADA compliant for anything we do out there anyway. So if we develop the full, complete master plan, whether it's the senior centerpiece, the state park piece, the baseball piece, all of that has to be ADA compliant. So we have to do that regardless of what we do on the site.
But the only thing about it is they will probably have the road in. And at that point, that they put it in, we're going to have to have that turn signal lane. We may not be able to afford that at that time. We may not even be able to have a signal.
I will point out, that's why one of the main parts of the M O U specifically indicates that we wouldn't be required to bring out the portion of our road up to standards until the funding for the senior community center has been provided.
And we have three years from the day that we receive adequate funding for the senior center.
And that would be one of the, one of the specific terms outlined in their M O U.
Don?
Oh, Don, just say that, don't fill out the name.
Don?
The entrance off of Goffy Road that will be ours that is going to be the emergency access does not require a turning lane at this point for while all the the prime that it is used for emergency access. We've already been run the wickets with DOT on that. And they've given their blessing on it. Turning lane will come into play when we develop our portion of the land and that becomes a permanent roadway as part of the town system, not before then.
Don, you're exactly right. Exactly right. DOT will only allow one entrance, and that's off the fairway into our property line. There's only one. This is unchanged. It's been this way for years now, several years. That is not changed at all. The deceleration lane that GMR will be putting in for their part, which is their roadway, to access the property in which they're going to develop. They will do that. They have to do that. That's by DOT. That is, that has nothing to do with the town and deceleration lane or AKA turn lanes. Not at all. Something significantly that's changed from this plan compared to three or four years ago is that now the town is investing to seek and put in a community senior citizen center, which is so needed in our town. It is, and you know that. So needed in our town. We have requested funding for it through our legislative delegation. It is another, another funding request, just like transportation that we had submitted for funding for the, for the facility. We intend to do that. Now, we will not begin construction on our part, and this is by the M O U that you have in front of you, until the town receives adequate funding for our part. It will not happen because we don't have the money. We don't have to review. We don't have it. And then even if, let's say that we get eight million dollars from the general assembly, which please, we've got three years from the day that we receive that to bring that additional road up to the town standards. But before we do that, GMR is going to put in a heavy piece where they're going to develop and design that road that's the only entrance in to fairway drive that's going to enhance not only their property as a secondary. Now, remember, we need a secondary too, if we're going to put in everything we're asking. We're going to need this very same thing. So this is, this is a very thought-out, debated, back-and-forth M O U that will benefit a development that has already been zoned by a previous board. And you can see that up there for the development. Go ahead, Don.
One more question. The roadway that GMR is going to be putting in that the easement for the deceleration lane is now, keep in mind, that is going to be a town road. So when you say we're giving up town property for their deceleration lane, in effect, it's actually our deceleration lane for a town street.
A town street that will connect to a community senior citizen center that we're going to build along with other recreational amenities on the golf course. I want everybody to understand.
I will point out too, the easement that we're talking about will ultimately be our permanent roadway, like Don said, and the entrance to our piece as well. So I don't think we're giving anything away. We're actually going to take over the entire road like Don stated for, maybe something we can win against on top.
There's nothing being given away here at all. It's just a sound partnership that is beneficial to both entities. Or the common goal of what we're all trying to do with providing amenities to the citizens of state or senior citizens in Hope Mills. And of course, a development that's been in development basis for the last couple of years that's going to enhance the backside of the golf course that is already privately owned, it's already been zoned. So that's what's before us tonight. So I'm going to ask the board, there's two motions. The first one is, I'm going to ask the board for a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with GMR Capital LLC where the installation and infrastructure tied to the senior center and golf course. That's the first of two motions. We're going to approve the memorandum, the M O U before we approve the easement, in that order.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding.
We have a motion, we have a second? We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor. How are we going to lock the gates on that inch of the golf course if we got public use of the property of the roads?
Because it's an emergency access roadway, there will be a knockbox gate there until we actually bring that roadway up to town standards. That would actually create a situation where the only public access to the development is off their main entrance. It would be locked for, to prohibit any additional access beyond first responders until that emergency access roadway is brought up to town standards by us.
Do we anticipate a conflict on that?
No, the knockboxes are on expected hours by the five o'clock.
Yes, I'm there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee.
Second to Mr. Marley's motion.
Yeah, we have a motion, we have a second. One other thing I wanted to add, there's been some discussion about the walking trail. That will not, that will not have to be ADA compliant until we start our construction on the golf course. Am I right, Don?
Partially.
Partially. I like that. That's a good answer, partially. Could you address the ADA piece while we're in discussion? I was going to, I was going to ask it earlier before you left.
If we keep the walkway like it is, a golfy greenway on the bottom half, we do not have to do anything else as far as ADA compliance nodes if we keep it as a walkway right now. It is as compliant as it used to be because it does have signings that identifies gradients out there. And that's what the requirement is, follow the natural contours of the land.
That's the partial, yeah. So as you cleared that up, that's the partial. So it's a lower piece. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? It's called for the vote. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries four one. Next motion. Since the M O U has been approved, the next motion is approval of the execution of an easement agreement.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the execution of the easement agreement.
Second? We have a motion, we have a second. We have any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion will carry four one. All right, moving on. Next item is under item D. All right, under item D, it's approval of the memorandum of agreement between the town of Hope Mills and the Cumberland County Board of Education and new police positions. We're going to have two motions on this one item. And I'm going to turn it over to Chancellor to brief us, to walk us into it on a little runway to walk us in, and then we're going to ask for the motions.
I definitely want to first thank our board, specifically our police chief. This is something we've been discussing for quite some time. And I do think that with the last board meeting, we approved the engagement letter that authorized the police chief to engage Cumberland County schools. And today we have is the contract that actually speaks to funding those positions. Police Chief Dodger will come up and speak specifically to the five positions we're talking about. But I definitely want to take this time to commend everybody for their hard work and due diligence and getting us to this level.
Thank you very much, Chancellor. Chief?
I'm addressing five SROs.
Additional personnel first, and then we'll go into the contract.
Okay, so the, the five officers will be for the, fill the five SRO slots, one at the high school, one at each of the middle schools, one will be responsible for some of the elementary schools, and then the fifth position is a rover for the elementary school slash scheduler slash supervisor. And that, that person will be responsible for supervising all of the SROs, putting the traffic force officers if when that gets, when that gets accepted. And then they'll also be responsible for scheduling, giving all the extra duty details that coincide with the SRO positions such as athletic events and plays and stuff like that. So that's where that, that position. School board will fund all of those. And then the other positions, two will be to, will be able to provide our own crime scene processing, which, which is very important for us. They'll be trained by Fayetteville Police Department. By August first, they'll be able to process all of our scenes and crime scenes within Hope Mills. And the other two positions will help us supplement the, the school additional calls for service, additional extracurricular activities and stuff like that, because a football game alone takes six officers to, to provide security.
Okay, Chief? So first motion, and we'll get into discussion. The first motion is to approve five school resource officer positions, one supervisor position, one officer position that will serve as a backup to the SRO positions. Along with these positions, the town also needs to add two CSI officers for a total of nine new positions that are currently not in our town's organizational chart. So before we consider and approve the contract with the schools, first, we have to add the positions to the town organizational chart. So that's why I did we put up this motion first. So we're adding nine new positions.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we add nine new positions as you read.
We have a motion, we have a second? We have a motion, we have a second. Now, do we have any discussion? Okay. Seeing no discussion, all in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Next motion is to approve the memorandum of agreement between the town of Hope Mills and the Cumberland County Board of Education.
Mayor, I'd like to put that in some of the motion as well, that we approved the memorandum of agreement between the town of Hope Mills and the Cumberland County Board of Education.
We have a second? We have a motion, we have a second. We have any discussion?
I do. I'd like to, I'd like to thank the police chief, town manager, and everybody involved with getting us to this point, this board. We had tough, tough conversations and I'd like to put that all behind us and be prepared to get this through.
Thank you, Commissioner Marley. I'd like to add the same as well. We've done something that's a very proactive approach of taking care of community policing with our own schools here in Hope Mills. And both of these items tonight sets the stage for when our schools reopen, and they will next month in August. Is that each school will start with our police officers that will be present. Now, crossing guards is a separate issue that we're working on, and that will be coming back to the board as well. But you, also you have to look at all the extra school activities that will be starting in August as well. And we know number one is, starts with F, let them believe it. Number one starts with football. And we've got to make sure our schools are safe. Not only for our kids, but for the staff and the faculty that work there. And that's the proactive approach we're taking tonight. By adding positions, by entering into a memorandum of agreement for Cumberland County schools. Is to make sure our community schools are safe when school starts. All in favor? Seeing none opposed, the motion carries. Both motions carry. This is probably a good opportunity since we're talking about the SRO contract. And we're talking about adding additional positions. Over the past month, Over the past month, there's been a lot of discussion about how we got here. A lot of good discussion, a lot of not so good discussion. And I wanna address something tonight, because leadership is about courage and accountability. So I'm gonna preface what I'm about to share tonight with the courage of accountability. I have two letters in my hand. And both these letters, one for myself and one for Police Chief Dodger, were signed and delivered to Cumberland County Sheriff, Ennis Wright. I'm gonna read part of what my letter is. Honorable Sheriff Wright, first, allow me to extend a heartfelt thank you for your extensive career of safety and dedication to do toward serving all residents as Cumberland County Sheriff. I am writing to express my sincere apologies for some unprofessional, obvious comments said by myself and certain town commissioners during recent public town board meetings. Yep, we said some things that we shouldn't have said. And when you're wrong, then you own up and you take accountability to it, and I own that. And I'm speaking on behalf of the board when I'm reading this letter. And the board members have read this letter as well. These statements were judgmental and hurtful, and I deeply regret making them, and I take full responsibility for my actions and disappointments that I may have caused to Sheriff Wright. My intention was not to question your exemplary professional leadership as Cumberland County Sheriff. It was not. My intention was not at all. Sometimes we get full of passion, and we may say something that, well, we wish we didn't say. I'm gonna tell you, my wife tells me something every day, and she always tells me this, taste your words before you say them. There's been times that we all have said things that maybe we shouldn't have said. Without question, when we received the letter on May twenty-first from the sheriff, I should have reached out and contacted you directly about the facts before making any statement or decisions. True. I should have made two phone calls, one to him and one to Cumberland County Board of Commissioners Chairman Glenn Harris. Yes, mistakes were made. Reckless comments were, were said. But I and we have learned a great deal from this situation, but I believe it. And clearly understand the magnitude of my actions. Lessons learned, and I'm prepared to make a public statement regarding this matter, which I am doing tonight. For many years, the Town of Hope Mills has engaged in a strong, positive partnership with the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office. We would like to continue this partnership in future years to come, as the safety of our citizens is paramount. I think we can all agree that that's, that the safety of all citizens is paramount. Our police department is taking over the SROs and traffic control officers duties in our local schools, and we hope to provide the same exemplary service as provided by your sheriff's office in past years. I wrote this letter June twenty-seventh. Actually framed it for me on official town letterhead. And I drove down to the sheriff's office, and I delivered it myself. I didn't send it through the mail, I didn't have somebody hand deliver it. I did it myself. I didn't meet with the sheriff. I didn't go to, go there to meet with him. I went there to deliver this letter to him to apologize for comments that were made by myself in this court. That's what you do when you're a leader, you stand accountable. And there were some comments made, and I am accountable for those comments tonight. We move forward. We have approved our additional positions, we approved our memorandum, and I'm hoping that this letter will be received in the matter in which it was delivered. Okay. Item C, move on. Creation and approval of Hope Mills homelessness advisory committee, and that's under tab thirteen.
It's kinda ironic that Brenda came to me and was telling us about they're having problems with the homeless again. I have witnessed so many times over the past few weeks, um, the homeless that are over there behind Coral Sees, standing out there in raincoats and hot, um, coats and all in the ninety-degree weather out there, um, and asking for money from people and from women by themselves. Uh, I also understand that the shop in center of there with the forest and all that, they keep their back doors deadbolted because they're afraid that they're gonna be coming in. I have witnessed twice fires that they have set over there right behind the, um, that little shopping area that our, that our, um, fire department has had to go and put out, and Cotton was there on the second one. That is so close where they're staying to all of those, uh, railroad ties that are up there that they could easily burn. And if that happens, we're gonna be in a mess. Um, I remember several years ago that a task force was formed by the former mayor, but I think at that time, there was people from other parts of the county, other elected officials that were put on that. Uh, can you address that and tell us what happened?
Yes, ma'am. Um, during COVID, we noticed an uptick in the homeless community here in the Town of Hope Mills, and it was visible because we were, we were at home more. And, um, we formed an unofficial, so it wasn't a official town committee, it was an unofficial town committee. And what I did was, I did, um, Hope Day. So Hope Day, um, Chancellor and LaMarco helped me come up with Hope Day. It was a day full of resources for people. Um, because I tried to take homeless out of it, because there are a lot of hidden homeless, and there are a lot of people, one or two paychecks away from being homeless. So I took the homeless out of it to not signify it. So it was a resource day, it had veterans, um, information in there, it had programs from FCCB. The culinary department provided free hot meals for people that were with COVID, um, booster vaccination clinic. There was, I mean, resources from all over the county from people, but we, we didn't have a big turnout. Um, at that time, I was told that we had two homeless people all in the Town of Hope Mills, so I would say I don't think it was supportive. But following, um, other municipalities, other people in this county, and dealing with homeless is not a quick and simple solution. I think the resources and the resource day was helpful, but it's not a, it's not a quick solution, and, um, I'm not saying that I agree with what's going on in Mrs. Brenda's neighborhood, but we can't keep shifting them from one area to the community from the, from, because if we move them from there, they're gonna go to somebody else's apartment company. So I'm not saying that it's right, but I think you're gonna have, when you have that conversation, I think you need to have some money behind it to, um, provide some resources for the homeless people in this community, um, uh, people in Hope Mills, because we don't really have any resources. They have to go all the way to Cumberland County to get resources. So what's happening with Hope Mills, as it, as it is developing, you're going to have problems that bigger cities have. Um, so the whole thing about we don't have a homeless issue here, we do have a homeless issue. You, you can see people visibly, a lot of people in this community visibly homeless, but I think it needs to be, I think it needs some money, and I think it needs to be a well-thought-out plan, and I don't think we can keep moving these people from, like I said, they, they don't, by the end of the year, they're gonna come over by mine, and then they're just gonna keep shifting. I don't really know what the answer is, but I do know that we're gonna be, it's gonna take everybody, I do think, for these people from all over the county to help, and it has to be an ongoing, um, it has to be some ongoing work. But I do know it is the issue, do I have the answer? Do I think anybody in this county or the United States has the answer? No, we go to all these conferences and things, and some of us share some of the same issues, problems with, um, not having enough people in public safety conditions, homelessness, these are things that everybody in the United States is, is working with and, um, being challenged with. So again, I don't have the answers. I think I stopped doing it because I don't have all the answers. I think the Hope Day was a small token of what we could do. We used to work with Mrs. Bitterley in the Arms House to provide hot meals, um, in October for World Homeless Day, which is general, generally the first and second week in October. But, um, I think, again, those are small things that you can start to do, but when it comes to this epidemic with opioid prices and, you know, people having, um, addiction issues, and just a plethora of things, mental health is very, very complex. And I'm not gonna say that I have all the answers or the resources for fixing.
Thank you. I, um, don't have answers either, but I do think we need to start somewhere. We need to find a place that we can make, I've been to other, um, cities that have a certain area that they have tents for them, they have homes built in there for them, uh, and make them stay in that area. And I don't know how we can do that, but, you know, maybe we could try to at least have an area for them. Um, I did see that, that, that if you offer shelter and you have shelter and you find that they are sleeping out somewhere, that they can be found now rested and, uh, and find the homeless. But what I'd like to do is let's start us a committee, let's get town people, volunteers, uh, and go from that. I know my next-door neighbor will work on it, and, yeah. My next-door neighbor, um, is, she works with social services. I have a neighbor across the street that said she would help. She is a retired psychologist. And it's people like that that we need to get on the committee. We need to then start working with the churches and other places. I also talked with people about funding. And, um, but we've got to start somewhere. And let me, uh, I do have here the Hope Mills homelessness advisory committee. Uh, you just want me to read that membership composition? A member of the committee shall exist of, I think that should be seven instead of six, appointed members and one town representative. The committee shall be desi, uh, designed to promote a community-wide commitment to the goal of preventing and ending homelessness. And, but, but let's start somewhere and see if we can't do something.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Skrol is next, and then I'll come back to you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Um, I know some time ago, um, it might have been last, um, last term, um, we discussed something about homeless, and I have one of the resources that she had a briefing, I can't remember where the location was, but, um, I talk, I talk with her on Facebook all the time. She runs the Underground Railroad. And, um, her motto is keep your hand on the plow, hold on. And if you follow the Facebook page, um, she gets a lot of the, uh, members that need assistance. She goes to the homeless communities, and she goes and tries to get them whatever they need. She does a lot of fundraising. She has, um, her location is not in Cumberland County, however, but she will reach out to anyone in any of the surrounding counties, towns, wherever. They, hey, there's a person in this town, they need assistance, um, they're gonna get evicted. Let's stop the eviction, because we don't wanna add to the homelessness, homelessness by having eviction. So she tries to help on that aspect. And I talked with her not too long ago. I was like, you know, can she come and maybe give us a brief? And so I would like to say, you know, I wanna have her, um, come to the town and give us a briefing of what her resources are. Because I, I've seen so many times, and because you had mentioned churches, I've seen so many times where people have reached out to churches and the churches turn on their curve, and she's like, why, why your, your church? Why are you turning them to us? Yes, we can help, but you can help too. So it's, uh, but she has many, many resources. Um, she, she doesn't even just help North Carolina. She helps all, like, the surrounding states. It's amazing what she does. Um, but I'm gonna reach out to her and see if we can get her to maybe give us a brief, because, um, that's something she's been working on for years, and, uh, she's very good at what she does, you know?
Thank you very much, Commissioner Skrol. Commissioner Lay?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. Manager, maybe we can have the people that's with the farmer's market to come in and set up and do the same thing they did at, uh, their bagels for us. They gave us fruit and vegetables. Maybe that will help feed them while they're...
Uh, uh, it's fine. I'm glad you brought that up, Commissioner Lay. Um, the, uh, jail team, uh, I forget what they did at the jail team, technically, uh, pretty much covered that month. Uh, many may recall, we did one prior to that in May. Second Harvest has actually committed to doing that throughout the rest of the summer. And so we hadn't actually announced the July date yet, but we're in the planning stages of that. I do think, and one thing with homelessness, I always say it's not the answer to homelessness. This is not a Hope Mills issue, it's a nationwide issue. But like Commissioner, uh, Skarola and Commissioner, oh, Mayor Porten, uh, McCray said, we can do something. You know, and it's a multi-pronged approach. Is it a program? Is it linkage to, um, other resources? But I do think that doing those distributions partnered with Second Harvest with our name tied to it, it actually hits a little bit harder now as opposed to a prophecy system doing it. I can point them directly to that lady as well, or I can roll up my sleeves and get down with her and invite her to our events, and we can start sharing ideas and things of that nature. And so even talking about what Commissioner, I mean, um, Chief Dodger's doing, he's doing whatever the police department can do from their vantage point. So I do think that, um, that's something we can do. Um, it'll probably be in the next manager's report for the next, um, produce distribution. I wanna say publicly that it's free of charge to anybody. I think the last one, we hit about four hundred and fifty cars. Um, and the only question I asked that day are, are you hungry? That's the only requirement. Tell me, how many families you picking up for? And this is something that we can do with our reach, um, from the Town of Hope Mills there.
That's good, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay.
Just wanted to bring it up.
Okay, Commissioner Lay, not the broom?
All of that is great. What I want to see is us get them out of the woods and into a community and, and so that they'll have bathrooms and showers and things like that, like a community. That's where I'm coming from. All this other stuff is wonderful, but that isn't a bed for them to sleep in at night. That's not a shower for them to go and have to take a bath. So we can do all of that, but I still want to list for them, uh, probably get them a community somewhere, some land that we could build on.
Commissioner Craver, Mayor Porten, nothing more?
Um, I, I agree with you saying, um, but I don't feel like, that's what I was going back to. I don't feel like we have the resources for that right now. But also, we had a tier-one committee, because when you, so we can't just feed them, because they'll tell you in Cumberland County, when you work with the homeless, we feed a lot of people. You're gonna have to give them resources. You're gonna have to, we had the workforce, uh, development van out here helping them do resumes, sign up for jobs, because now we're treating a symptom to a larger problem. I think it needs to be a tier-one committee to focus on low income in general, because you have people that, again, are one paycheck or two paycheck away from being homeless, and if you don't have the money or a place where they can shower and you give them shelter, I don't know what, as, as a town, and I, I wouldn't make it a town committee with six people. I would widen that, because there, there's, there's, there's resource that Cumberland County has that we don't have. So I think you're gonna have to be, I think we might feel a bit more creative, um, with the, the number of people and who we pull in on that committee. But them sleeping in a tent is a symptom of larger problems that they're, they're... But them sleeping in a tent is a symptom of larger problems that there are things that you can do. So I agree with the committee. I just don't think it should be like a, one of our regular town committees. Because I wouldn't want it to be limited per se of the people we bring in. And I think that we don't have the resources to provide them the land and the showers and things like that. But are there other things that you can do? And again, I don't have all of the answers, but that's just my, that's just my opinion.
This isn't something that we can do in the next week. And I agree with you, like with all the other committees, we need more than seven members on a committee. And this one, we need to get people that are on there that are educated and have the experience in different levels, like mental health and those kind of things. That's where I'm coming from. So we want to do it as a commission and open it up. But I think at the end of the month, aren't you bringing up, Mayor, about us opening up the committees to have more people?
We'll have a discussion about committees coming up on the future agenda. We'll have a discussion about committees.
Okay. And if you want to list this and set in a mountain now, but like I said, it's not going to happen next week. It's not going to happen next month. But it's something that we have got to do. I mean, we can't just ignore this problem because they're right in the middle of the town. And when you're having neighborhoods around calling you and saying, I'm frightened. I live here by myself. They walk down the street all the time. They've got dogs. I can't even let my dog go out in the yard. It's, and I understand how they feel. And so that's why I feel like that as a community, we need to get together and do something.
Thank you, Commissioner Craver. Any other comments?
No, I support, again, it was your vision, your plan. I support what you're doing. I hope you get a lot more support than I did.
Again, you know, some years ago, someone made a statement that we don't have any homeless people in Hope Meals. I'm going to tell you, every community in these United States has a homeless issue. Everyone, everyone. And that can happen. You can find yourself homeless. Any one of us in this room could find ourselves homeless. COVID upset and upended our country. There were people that were homeless before COVID. And they even added more to it since COVID. There's a lot of folks that don't want to hand out. They want to hand up. I know this. Commissioner Scirola knows this. Commissioner Really Mitchell knows this because we see it in our veteran population. So it touches me deeply. Taste my words now. Make sure I don't say anything wrong. But I am passionate about it because every community has a homeless issue, everyone. So to make a statement, we don't have homeless people in Hope Meals, or you're fooling yourself because you're wrong. Let me tell you, homeless people, they are people too. I have a friend, Bridget Thompson, who bags up, and really you know who she is. She bags up a tremendous amount of supplies. And she goes and she visits every person that's in a homeless environment. And she hands it out. And she does this, she pays for it herself. She delivers it herself. I know she gave me five bags myself and we went together. Commissioner Craver is correct. We have to start somewhere. Mayor Potem, Dr. McCray is right. We have to start somewhere as a committee. And that starts tonight. All in favor of the committee? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now we go on to committee liaison updates. And that's under number nine on committee activities. Instead of going through all of them, I'm just going to ask the commissioners if there's any committee reports you would like to update or any action that you would like to have taken tonight. By all means, just raise your hand and I'll start off with Commissioner Scollo.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll start off with the Veterans Affairs Committee. We had a forum. We got a meeting. It was, you know, went well. We need to remove a member, Lindsey Scott. Needs to be removed. She has yet to attend any meetings. She didn't answer any phone calls or emails, so we cannot get a hold of her. So we're going to go ahead and I'd like to make the motion to remove Lindsey Scott from the Veterans Affairs Committee.
We have a motion. We have a second to remove Lindsey Scott from the Veterans Affairs Committee. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. What's the purpose of removing? And the reason I'm asking is we have such a hard time of getting people to fill these positions. But if she's not coming to meetings, then I understand it.
She never came to a single meeting. I don't even know what she looks like.
Okay.
Did you get a second?
Yeah, we have a motion. We have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any non-opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. So we had that for the Veterans Affairs Committee. I want to give a quick update of, because I have quite a few committees, a quick rundown of all my committees. So that was for Veterans Affairs. We're actually, we should have three spots available. We're working on our bylaws, so there'll be more to follow for that. But we should actually have, with that one person removed, there was two additional spots though. Because we only have four members currently. Then we also for the Chamber of Commerce. So we got a new president. Lake Wood is now the president of the Hope Meals Chamber. We did a rebranding. There's a brand new website and brand new Facebook page. If you go to the old link for the website, you won't find it. It's a whole new website, hopemealschamber.org. Let's see what else we have going on. So we have our July luncheon, July 10th. It's for members only, so you have to be a member of the Hope Meals Chamber to attend. There's a registration link on the hopemealschamber.org website. So you can register to attend. It's $10. They will also be, the chamber will be in the Hope Meals July 4th Parade. So that's coming up. And then they're also, they still have open registration for the golf tournament. We had to change the date of the golf tournament because it was raining that day. So the golf tournament is now going to be on August 29th. It will be a little bit toasty, turn water for who's going to be on my team. Yeah, but there's still room. If you want to have your own teams, you can reach out to the Hope Meals Chamber. You can still request to have a team. Or if you are as a single player, you can always see if there's a spot open on one of the other teams. So I have that information. I don't have any updates for FAMFO. My meeting is coming up on the 24th. So I have no meeting update for FAMFO. Air quality, as I get the emails from the Sustainable Sandhills, I will post them up on my Facebook page of any air quality updates. Like the last one I posted when the heat index was like 103. So as I get more information, I will post that up on my Facebook page. This is all.
Okay. Commissioner Scollo, anyone else? Commissioner Craver?
Yes, I'm the liaison for Parks and Recreation Advisor Commission. Most of what they discussed last meeting, the manager brought out. But I do have one thing that hasn't been told, and it's about the senior citizens development. There's going to be a public input survey that will be live next week, I guess, on the town's website. Is that correct?
More than likely, it'll probably go on the website and all social media outlets.
Okay. And the questions will be geared toward the senior community center. So be on the lookout for that and get all your friends and neighbors, especially senior citizens, have them to fill that out so you can get back in.
Mr. Craver? Anyone else?
Mr.
Mr. Layton?
Yes, thank you. I'm the liaison for the Appearance Commission. And we did meet this past week. They're in dire need. They're wanting to assist with the 4th of July parade. And they were wanting to see about getting funds or they want to pass out some small flags. And they want to set up a table. Actually, it's going to be hard to do, but I told them I would bring it before the board. And I guess they would have to come to the manager and Drew and see how much the flags would cost that they want to give out. The table's set up. It's no big deal. They wanted to do it during the parade. And I would say maybe the manager or Drew can take the lead on that. And that's all they were asking me for.
I will add that our time plan has been in contact with all committees. That's probably something that I would run through Parks and Rec, Director Lamarcus Morrison. I don't think they have to have board approval to participate in different capacity parade. Because they're not talking about entering with a float. They're talking about just providing some information. And so I do think I would check with Drew and Ashley to check what their budget is because they may have the funding to be able to do this. I'm not sure if they were talking about doing it this Thursday or just in general on the 4th of July events, but I'll reach out to them about that.
I think they were wanting to hand the flags out at the lake this week. But it's hard to get stuff together that fast with everything that's got to be done to do it. From scheduling the event to having the time to go buy the flags, having the time to have them or the money to buy them with is another thing. And I think they got a little bit late start on that for this year. But we can check into it and see what happens.
Definitely do that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Layton. Anybody else? One item I would like to point out, this is probably good of Chancellor Ann Ashley. Since we're going to have a senior citizen survey go out, I think it's going to be popular at the same. Can you go ahead and put out a press release to highlight that?
Definitely. Just to add to that, Mr. Morrison, it's, the survey initially started when they were engaging the architecture firm on the program elements. And that's what's driving the questions. And so they solicited just input, as much input from the general public as possible so that the feedback from that survey can help guide the architecture design of the senior community center. And so we'll have a little press release on that as well. And we'll make sure that it goes out to as many people, it turns our residents on.
Go ahead.
It was said that the engineer is going to, or the contractor, or not the contractor, but the architect is going to have two designs ready to bring back to us probably our next meeting. That will be the public input meeting for them to look at. So I guess they're going to go ahead and get two designs ready for us to pick some from.
I can confirm that with Mr. Morrison tomorrow.
Thank you, Commissioner Craver. Commissioner Scollo.
I do have an alibi. I just wanted to remind for those on committees that the joint event committee, commission, whatever you want to call it, committees of committees, is tomorrow at 6:00 PM at the chapel?
At the chapel.
At the chapel, at the chapel. The committee of committees is at the chapel.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Scollo. Next item is item 10, that's reports and informational items. We've got the Historical Preservation Committee coming up July 10th, 6:00 PM. That's at the chapel. In fact, all committees are at the chapel now, all of them. Cultural Arts Committee is Thursday, July 11th. That's at 6:30. And that's at the chapel. And of course, the committee of committees meeting is tomorrow at 6:00. Now, I'm going to tell you how important this one is. It's because they're looking at establishing the calendar of Parks and Recreation events for the next year. So that public input is key to be a part of the calendar events and what we're going to do for the entire community beginning in July, which is where we are now, to the end of June next year. So that's really key to bring some public input. The Senior Citizen Center Designs, of course, we're going to survey. We're going to gather comments from the survey. We'll also have public hearings where people that may not, were able to say anything on a survey and/or will have an opportunity to come in and share their opinions and their input. And so I invite everyone that that is forthcoming. And that should be some really good discussion as we canvass our community for comments. All right, before we get to staff comments, there's a couple, there's a couple of comments that I want to share with our board members. And it's regarding social media. I have a mayor's page. So does Commissioner Craver. She has a commissioner's page. So does Commissioner Scirola. Mayor Potem doesn't have an elected office social media page, nor does Commissioner Marley, nor does Commissioner Layton. Here's what I would like to tell us. Is that when we speak, we serve the citizens of Hope Meals. I said we serve. But when we speak in any form of communication, we represent the town. And I want, and I'm serious about that. Now, can we comment as an individual citizen because we are afforded our First Amendment rights? Yes, we can. And Dan, if I'm wrong, then jump in. But as I said earlier, taste your words before you say them or print them or share them. Because there are so many people that are watching us either in person or on our YouTube videos. And they watch us perform as a governing body. And we have done amazing things in seven months that we've been together. Amazing things we have done. But there are also people that watch what we say on social media. Social media is an important medium of communication. I only have my mayor's page. I'm not a member of any community closed social media groups any longer. So I'm very careful what I post and what I say. And I'm asking the board members to please be the very same way and know that what is posted and what is said represents the town. And I just, I'm not hand slapping here. And I just, I, I'm not hand slapping here, I'm just bringing to a point that civility in social media is a form of us. But I don't wanna diminish our First Amendment rights to speak as a private citizen on issues that you feel so strongly and passionate about. Again, we serve the people of Oak Mills. When we speak, we represent the town. We represent our town here with the people, and we represent our town outside of our community, for those that are watching us. And tonight, we, we have really taken some actions, some proactive action tonight, with our SROs and the safety of our schools. We really, really have. So I don't wanna belabor it, I just want to bring caution to us as a board. That let's just watch what we say, what we post, and be mindful of how that may be interpreted or taken by someone that's watching us. That's all that I'm asking, is to take that level. Is there any comments from the board before I go to staff comments?
I have a request.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I know this isn't actually in the gym, but I got a request to the board, um, earlier in the meeting, they were gonna have the item on upcoming agenda about committee. I'd like, I, I'd like to ask this board if we could do maybe a short information work session, I have a lot of questions and stuff I'd like to answer about committees.
That's the workshop I'm talking about.
Before, before we do it, before we put it on in the gym, I'd like the board to get there and have a short work session on committees. Uh, it could be before that meeting or a date, other than the day of the meeting, but, um, you know, maybe an hour, something like that, just to turn the meeting, um. I'd like to get the ordinance on the, um, on the committees, what the ordinance actually says, and, and stuff, a lot of questions.
Would you like to, uh, would you like to meet at, uh, five o'clock on July fifteenth?
I, I mean, I don't have my calendar, it's in front of me, but I mean, I'm sure we can stage that.
So next, so next meet.
I will point out that we do have, uh, the State Historic Preservation Office coming in from fifteen to five thirty for a special session with Historic Preservation Committee.
I mean, we could, we could do it, we could do it, I mean, you say at five, I mean, it won't take long, the questions I had, I don't know if everybody answers, I have a lot of questions, but, but just for some things we need to discuss before we dive into the meeting.
Mr. Marley, I don't think a half hour is gonna do it, it's gonna take one hundred and fifty.
Well, we can, we can skip, I mean, I just want to bring that up to the board, so you can talk about it, since we come up with a date at, at a later time. Um, if, if the manager can look at some availability before upcoming meeting, maybe, that we can do a quick work session, I appreciate it.
This is first meeting in office, I'm like, actually. Okay, let's just shoot for office.
State Historic Preservation Office is coming in, um, to five thirty on the fifteenth of July, five thirty.
I might be a little late, I already have appointments that evening, but I'll, I'll try to, I'll be here as soon as I can.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I did wanna kinda echo what you said, we've lost business in this town for the way that we conduct ourselves up here, sometimes on our social media page, because we look unhinged to the public. So we do have to watch the way that we carry ourselves up here and so on social media, because we represent all of you, whether you voted for me, whether you like me, or not, we represent all of the citizens of the town of Oak Mills. So we do have to watch the way that we conduct ourselves at all times. We absolutely are.
Okay. Got a lot to say tonight, haven't we? Well, I am eleven, staff comments, I'll start with, uh, let me start with Dan, and go down, and go down the wall.
Sure, I, I don't really have any comments, I will let the board know, I'm unavailable to attend the next meeting, I can have someone here on the half.
Uh, Katie two point oh?
Yes.
Haven't seen her in a while. Dan, sir?
Uh, no real comments, stay tuned for, uh, at, uh, later this day or tomorrow, the time manager's report will be on the government Facebook page.
Okay.
I'm sorry I had to be the one to go last, um, but I do have, um, one question and one point clarification. Um, if the board recalls at your last special budget workshop meeting, you elected to have all of the committees and their funds to fall under the administration. And so I did reach out to all of the board chairs on June twenty-fourth, and let them know that if they needed any purchases, to come through, uh, myself or K'onda. So that's gonna be the new process, and so I think it might be a really tight turnaround to get anything, um, Fourth of July related by the fourth at this point. Um, but if the Appearance Commission or any other committee needs anything, just have them contact, um, either myself or K'onda. Um, so there was that point of clarification, and then my question is, um, regarding the membership composition of the Homelessness Advisory Committee. Um, you approved the item, and as it's written, the membership composition is at seven. So I saw that there was some discussion about that, and so I'm not sure if you intended to leave it as such, or if you wanted to change that number.
Well, I thought that the meetings were like seven.
Yes, ma'am, um.
I thought they were like seven, and then a board member would be the liaison, but it read to me like only six members at one town.
Yeah, so, um, following, following in line with the Cultural Arts Committee, that was the same format, so I just followed that. So it's seven total, and the way the Cultural Arts Committee bylaws was, were written, was that it was six members, one town representative totaling seven.
Okay, well, I agree with that one, so I, and I didn't know, so, ever how we approved it's fine.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
Maybe change it.
Yeah.
So that's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ashley.
I do have one more question, the Appearance Commission, because their commission, their funds fall under a suit.
Yeah.
We moved them all.
They moved, we moved them all.
We moved them all.
Okay, I thought the commission operated it really from the committee, that's all.
We moved all the line items.
Yeah.
All right, K'onda, you're next.
I don't have anything.
Drew?
Haven't.
Leanne? There's no good news?
There's not good news.
Oh, there's always good news. Don? Wake up Bruce, Bruce, you got anything?
I'm up.
Yeah? All right, let's go to the back wall. Any, Chief, you got anything? What about you, former Commissioner Really Mitchell? Emily, you've already had your turn. Fire Chief, you got anything? All right? Anybody else? Our two captains, any, anybody? Nothing else? All right? I guess we've got a motion to adjourn. Second? I'm sure everybody's ready to go, motion approved, we are adjourned.
I'm not, I'm gonna be here five. So once, we can, well, come on. We all owe me months.